And we can only assume that sales packs would be coming in. But our main concentration right now is to, I think, work on the entrance and work on the main roads to all the facilities out there. I know that there have been other projects that have been, had been mentioned that were going to be worked on this year. But because of the situation that we have out there and the people wanting their road out there, we're gonna have to concentrate mainly on that. I know that we have the project out on Paloma Drive, right now, the apartments, they're being, uh, worked on at this time. I think very shortly, probably, you're gonna be seeing structures out there. Right next to it, you have the state, uh, state agencies that are going to be housed in one building. That also will be, uh, very shortly will be completed. And you're gonna have concentration of the state agencies that are providing funds and assistance to the people in the community, they'll be housed in there. So, especially those, uh, those two projects on Paloma Drive and the one on El Rancho, this park are pretty main concerns that we have at this time. I know that, uh, we have, uh, I have looked personally at the situation with regarding the playing fields. I know I'm a firm believer in, uh, providing, uh, make all the diamonds for no lingers. And I'm very interested in trying to see if we can at least start on a project that we have intended to start in this year at the North Crest, uh, area. And I know that some work has been done prior to being, uh, getting into this position, but I think we need to do more work out there than anticipated. But until we know definitely, you know, financially where we at and how much the cost factor is gonna be on the construction of the entrance and the, and the road at the industrial park, will we then make other things happen? Those are the things that...
Ram, I'm gonna hit you with a bunch of requests.
Okay.
And a question. First question is, you know, the, the 4A or 4B appointed you as the interim director. What actions are they taking in a search for a permanent director?
We have put it out in the, uh, through TML and through ACOG. And, uh, applications have been flowing in in the last few weeks. So, we, we are getting a lot of response on those ads.
Do we have a timeline that they expect to be reviewing or starting to interview?
We're having a meeting Monday, and I'm sure that, you know, they're, they're gonna be asking what, how many we have. And, uh, you know, then at that point in time, I imagine that they'll be deciding.
There wasn't a total of three websites or three sources that they were gonna go up for, for, uh, applicants? Or was it there three in the beginning, or is there, has there always been two?
Uh, my understanding that is, like I say, I'm gonna be wrong with that. The ones that I heard was through ACOG and through TML. And you follow it here's a new...
That's what we assisted them with, uh, TML and ACOG to get that out. I'm not sure if there was any...
Right there. So, people there at North Crest, was that land that was donated for...
Yes, uh, Mr. McKendie, who is the property owner for the North Crest subdivision, donated those acreage right next to the, uh, creek.
Next to the creek?
Yeah. And, uh, we have some, uh, we have some plans, you know, to order a number of fields, soccer fields, uh, and other activities for that area. But at the same time, you know, we need to know, uh, the cost factor. I think Mayor, you had mentioned, you know...
I was told, I was told sixty-five thousand.
Which brings us to an interesting point here, Ram. The two other requests that I have is one for a listing of the projects that the FEDC is currently involved in, as well as those that they are planning on doing in the future. The second request I have of the EDC is for a financial report. Uh, I think that in these quarterly reports to the council, we need to be looking at a financial report of the EDC, because the EDC's finances are not included in the monthly reports that we as the council receive. My third request of the FEDC comes back to the Rancho Grande in that one point five million dollars of the eight million dollar bond issued that the city did was, ended up in the FEDC's hands, and I don't know if that's the right terminology, for the purpose of Rancho Grande development. I'd like to see an accounting of that one point five million dollars. I think that board has been in place, and we've had an opportunity to start to get some things going. Uh, I, as a council member, would like to see that we use that one point five million dollars appropriately in Rancho Grande. I will get those, uh, before... I, I know you jumped into a lion's den, Ram, and I appreciate the, the work that you have done. I've heard nothing but praise from your board members, and you have a strong board there that I believe is, is working to get things done. We just need to ensure that the council is informed, uh, maybe a little bit more than what has been occurring. And the second point I'd like to make to you is, I don't know if you have actually formally met or not, but Doug Jones is the president of our Parks Foundation, who's working hard to ensure all of our parks are brought up to speed. And if this is a project out at North Crest that the FEDC is considering, I think that we may need to partner with the Parks Foundation to ensure that we're going in the right direction.
And if I may, could I ask you, was the land donated to the B Corporation or is it donated to the city? Like, can I have control of it if I can get money to do whatever? Or does he own it?
That would, you know...
The city, right? It's donated to the city.
I think it went to the city and then the, what the city did at the time is said, well, uh, for the FEDC to try to develop. And, uh, but, uh, I'll be fine.
And Councilor Miller, Mr. Jones has seen the plans, and I think so has his board, right?
Yes.
I don't think they have...
Yeah, I think we might, it's a catch that we have.
But if the FEDC is considering funding a portion of that, I would certainly partner with Mr. Jones, and let's ensure that we're, we're going down the right road with that.
Amen.
May I now make a comment or question here? Uh, before you answer Mr. Miller's question, were we have spent or will be spending the one point five million? My understanding has been, and I haven't found anything differently, that that one point five million was never dedicated only to the industrial park. It included the industrial park, but it had other projects involved. So, I, I, unless you can find where it specifically says that the one point five was dedicated, I think your answer has to include other things too.
And that may be the case, because my question was about the one point five million.
We will do the research, and we will try to find it.
Okay. Do they want any questions, Mr. Jones? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go on to planning zoning. Mr. Bykman?
Good evening there, City Council. Uh, planning zoning is with the, what I'm sorry, we've had, uh, super quiet meetings. Last month, we particularly concentrated on the new Richardson's Chevrolet dealership and the interesting challenges that come with the volunteer donations. And we, we updated on that last night as well. Uh, we did have a application last night for a change of, uh, use, which I believe is coming before council, uh, somewhere on the agenda tonight. The P and Z last night, because of the boundaries, you tabled it, but also because it was incorrectly, um, it was, uh, under, it should have been under business, and it's under commercial. We're putting offices in, and that is under business, it is not under commercial. So, those are the two reasons it was tabled last night. Most exciting thing that happened yesterday was we had our first meeting with the Land Use Plan, uh, the, uh, the future, uh, Land Use Plan. And we're gonna fast track this. We had originally thought it was gonna take five to six months, but we are actually gonna meet every two weeks and try to finish it somewhere around the twenty-sixth of June. That's kind of required, one, for work by the board. And we're also widening the scope of input. We will, uh, with Cindy's, uh, help, we will be inviting school boards, criminal authority helps, FEDC, 4A, and Tax Act to come to these meetings, and we want their input on floors and growth. So, hopefully, our next meeting is two weeks' time. And as I say, we will be widening the scope of that. It's exciting. And we urge anybody, public as well, to come to these meetings and see what we're doing. It would be very easy to start a new city and plan a growth, but when you've got a city that's as old as floors, well, as you have to start with what makes floors special. And I don't know if anybody saw the board in there, but the, the number of ideas that came up to make floors special last night surprised even me. I was extremely pleased. And our, our first project that we, our own project, is to come up with a mission statement by the next meeting, so we'll be working on that. And that's where we're at with the P and Z right now. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Bykman, as this goes on, I know that there are challenges in getting all of the council to participate in these meetings, uh, because of Open Meetings Act issues and because of time constraints and all of the other meetings that go on in the city. If there's any, uh, documents, graphs, or anything to that effect that are distributed at these meetings, uh, could you forward them to the council as well, just, just for record? That way, we can kind of be following the progress that you have if we cannot attend these meetings.
Absolutely, I can do that. And we did have a document last night, which was basically, this was the first meeting, setting schedules, setting expectations, and trying to, um, get a working plan going. I wish we'd get it successfully, and I would call the, some city council.
You know, or even your, you know, summary as the chairman of what was accomplished, you know, as a note to those attachments, so that we can follow the progress of this as well as what's on the agenda for the next meeting, that if a council member sees something very specific that they're interested in, they, they can attend.
And I would like to say that I'm extremely impressed with Chris Skillett, who is heading this up. Um, he's done this before, which really helps.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is I have three, Parks Foundation, Mr. Jones.
Mayor of City Council? Yes, I'm still Doug Jones, and I'm glad to be here. I don't know if this is in the right format, but I'm learning, as are the seven exceptional directors, and I thank the board that you six gave these talented group of people, and you appointed them to fill in with us, because they're energetic. Here's one of the new directors. I'll even get the newspaper guy on that. During the first quarter, we've had three meetings. At the first meeting, Lou basically ran it for us and told us the whats and the wheres. And then the railroad song started, and I got elected to the president. The person who nominated me, I then nominated her, and that's Cindy Johnson, and she will be our vice president. Michelle Talley's the secretary, and the treasurer is Joelle Pies. Two directors once there in the high, Thomas volunteered to be our project coordinator. He's gonna work with another of our directors, Alex Trevino. They're gonna be like two hands together, working, hopefully, when we start getting some money, that we'll be able to start knocking off those projects that Alex has in the city recreation park department. We reviewed prior to rise his list, and hopefully, like I said, once we find some money, we can start doing some things. We requested the council to appoint Alex as our eighth director, as per our bylaws, and said that we needed somebody from the park recreation. He took the recommendation, he appointed Alex, so we've got eight great people. We reviewed our bylaws, we've added them, and hopefully, next Wednesday, we can approve them. The good news is, we got a little bit of money. The bad news is, is that when Alan and myself sat down with Laura, she advised me that because the previous foundation didn't submit paperwork in time and manner to the government of Texas, that the city was presented with a fourteen hundred dollar bill, based upon some information on the founding documents that talked to about ninety thousand dollars worth of money that would come across the foundation. Joelle has talked to the people up in Austin, and we get to get it resolved. If we don't get it resolved, then we will reimburse the city the fourteen hundred plus whatever the change was. But hopefully, she can get that fixed for us. We've been trying to figure out what to do with that dollar water charge. When I did my fuzzy math after your water and sewer rates, I said twenty-five hundred connections times nineteen months, we ought to have about forty thousand dollars. When Joelle and I sat down and talked with Laura in February, she said the account balance and the special revenue side was only twenty-six thousand, so I'm sitting there saying, how come we short? Well, Claravoyans came over, and I was briefed today that the twenty-six thousand that she talked about was your closed business FY eleven and twelve. So, if you would correct your item three, where it says twenty-six, we're extra thirty-seven thousand dollars in that, uh, account, that we can spend money with the, uh, city preparation department. And since Lou's here, I'm gonna take this opportunity to ask him, somewhere along the line, I was led to believe that that money was to be used as a matching fund account. And if it's not, then with the occurrence of, obviously, the city council and the rec department, can we start spending it?
Yes, it was intended, to answer your question, to be matching funds, and it was intended to be matching funds with Texas Parks and Wildlife, when they had a program with matching funds. And in the last biennium, they did not. And my understanding is that that's not gonna be refunded, that if you watch the legislative budgeting process, you may find some money getting put in there, but assuming not, then you can use it otherwise.
Would we need ill-advised to start expending that funds?
Need to look at the budget first. The budget and chairman, I mean, uh, Presiding Officer Strauss from San Antonio has got the budget almost spent, finalized through the House. There's the document you can look at and find out if Parks and Wildlife will have any matching funds, or you can call the commission directly. Assuming that ends with negative, that's a yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So, projects that we've undertaken, our vice president Cindy Johnson is developing an informational flyer. Our intent was to get it out at the two Easter services at Pecan Park, and we're gonna get it out last Saturday to the Little League season opener out at the city park. But we didn't have some information that we currently have, and I'll explain that when we get down later, so, but she's gonna still do it. Sherry has awkward your flyer machine out here, or the rotating screen, and Gloria out at the city park has also said at City Center, that we, if we had any kind of information, anything we wanted to do, that she could also put it on that electronic devices out there. Last week, Joelle and Michelle undertook a Herculean task. They went out and found a professional painter. The mayor led turnus to a source of paint, paint supplies from Quoys. And they made the concession stand on the exterior and the restrooms look like they're really brand new. I'd like to put a word up in for Mr. Ruth and Trinidad, who was the painter, Quoys Building Supply, done it the paint, the outstanding work Michelle and Joelle did, Larry Latka from the Little League, and my neighbor Andy Holliday went out on May Friday. But if you've not been out there to see it, with that side, that would look like brand new. The Wilson County Patriots have joined the Catholic Girls, and I thank the Knights of Columbus to volunteer their support. They're gonna try to help us raise funds by doing bake sale slash garage sale, and they're even talking about sponsoring a bike ride like they do over at Zeta Post or Laverne. And some of us play in Sheriff Tackett's Sound fundraising. They have twenty-four teams, four golfers apiece at sixty-five dollars. There's eighteen holes that you can get sponsorship on the holes to make some money, to raise money for us. If anybody out here knows of Deep Pockets, please see me, that we need the money. And if you wanna volunteer to come out and do things, there's a lot of work to be done in all your city facilities. On our wish list, we include, right off your M and S report from last year, the restaurant. And Gloria, I mean, those three directors that are female, I mean, after seeing some of the stuff that we saw part of painting, I wouldn't even let my mom do so fast. So, we've got some work to do, and again, with the money, we're gonna get there. I had a chance to visit with the pool man. That facility's got some rot and rook and whatever. We wanna tackle that too, but again, we need money. Or if you know a corporation that wants to come and build a new swimming pool facility, please. We like to hear about the sports bills. In fact, last Tuesday morning, as I was going out there to do the painting, I saw Alex and his crew, who had a water line break at Pecan Park. They found out that one of their meters is always on. So, if we can go out there and get a professional irrigation company to come in and put irrigation in parks, we're gonna save some time, effort, and money that those guys can do the other things in the city. And Lou pointed out in the very first meeting, that Pecan Park used to be a lush pecan forest over there. And there's been some degradation for whatever reasons, probably two and a half years drought this year, back two and a half years. And then when I first put gutters on my house, my neighbor says, I was the jumper that caused the first drought in, in two thousand and eight, so we're gonna work there. And last but not least, Mr. Peter Yuhas, volunteering his time and his effort, we now have a Park Foundation Facebook page. Hopefully, that will give us some information, not only with the citizens of the city, the county, surrounding areas, whatever. Please, jump on it. Tell us when and what you can do for us, you know, ask them up what they're gonna do for your city, and do it for your citizens. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. You've done enough, we'll all be in your booth. Now, we're gonna go on to the municipal board, the judge.
Mayor, uh, today at four forty-six PM, this guy Bahad came in and advised that Judge Gossel was unable to attend.
I see there's a report in our boxes.
Yes, ma'am, that was put on Ellen's desk just prior to that. We don't have an explanation on it. I don't feel comfortable speaking to it, because I've not reviewed it from the judge. Um, we can try to put her on possibly the next council meeting to discuss those.
Let's do that. Okay. Now, we go to street maintenance planning. It's on the ordinance. Okay, now the ordinance is being...
As I speak on the ordinance, it's a matter of council, but I think, um, all of you received your ordinance books on Monday. Those are the most updated correlating books that we have, we've gone through them. In addition, we added a couple of ordinances to the map that have been passed since two thousand and ten, which is the last set of correlations. Those are the ones that have been passed and signed, and what we have in our books currently, um, our ordinance committee we're looking forward to. As you can see in there, some of those ordinances are back from the seventies and not been updated. That's something that I think is gonna be a, a good thing for our ordinance committee to, to work on. But we've thoroughly gone through them, I feel comfortable in that what we've got out there is good. We've got all of the old original signed documents, they're actually sitting in the mayor's office. There's five giant books back from the seventies, um, that have the original signed copies in them. So, if you'd like to see any copies of those ordinances, please feel free to contact us, and we can get those for you. Are there any questions on the books that we handed out on Monday? Did everybody get their books?
Yes, thank you. This was done, uh, uh, to steal a, a word from Mr. Jones, a Herculean act. Just, I haven't had a chance to go through all of it. My concern was, I know the city charter had been amended. Uh, does this city charter that's in the ordinance reflect those amendments?
Yeah, Mr. Jones, I did not check that. I can check that for you. It should have been changed. If it was correlated in there, the new section should be added in there, and it would have a date on the bottom of the page that will give you the last update on that.
Are we going to be getting, uh, an updated ordinance book where everything's brought into this format? I know we had moved some money around for, in the mayor and city council fund, for the codification of this. Do we have a timeline on that?
No, we're looking at, excuse me, we're interrupting. We're looking at the ordinance committee to meet, to decide what we need to add on that. Is that something that we're gonna move on before we do that, or after we review what we need to and send everything to the law?
And my question would be, you know, generally, these types of organizations have a subscription service of sorts, that we enroll in that subscription service, so that we start to get a current book, and then as updates are made, change page seven to this page, or that sort of thing. Uh, I think that's clearly the direction that we need to be going, is that subscription service, uh, even as the ordinance committee moves forward.
And, Mr. Miller, just so you know, there is one, the last one, um, was actually turned in in two thousand and twelve, and it went through ordinance number three hundred and seventy-eight, which was ratified on nine twenty-three, two thousand and ten. The additional ones that you have, there are copies of the ordinances, we will send in. It is a costly thing. The more ordinances we can send in at one time, we get a cheaper rate from when they come back. So, once the ordinance committee starts looking over and we wanna make changes to any of those ordinances, we can send a large package, we can, we can do that this year.
Can I recommend that, that you have those costs available to the ordinance committee, so the ordinance committee can make a recommendation to council as to, do we start that process now, or do we?
Absolutely, I can get the rates going.
Madam Mayor, if I can just chime in on one other thing, there's two things I want you to be aware of in the ordinances. These are ordinances that are codified, that are of general application, your budget ordinance, your other ordinances like Mr. Gleason's, uh, fee schedule, uh, your rates on water and sewer are probably not gonna appear in here. So, those are items that you're generally gonna need to look for separately. For example, your tax rate, that you said annually, that's not gonna appear in here, et cetera, when you adopt the budget by ordinance. But with those exceptions, these are your general rules that apply across the board, that your police officers will follow, if you're annual scheme, when you eventually get some new update, all that will be here. So, there will be some ordinances, just by way of caution, that are not of general application, that will not be here, so you'll have to keep in mind what kind of ordinances you're looking for, just by way of education.
Any questions on the ordinances? Okay, now, we're gonna go on to 4B. Consideration in action to a pre-street closure of half Orton's side of C Street between Third and Fourth Streets, for Chamber of Commerce Market Place, and now Ministries Health there May eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Uh, is Ms. Bedes still? Ms. Bedes and, uh, Mr. Bykman? Share.
City Mayor and Council. My name is Lori Beads, and I am with Mel Ministries. I was here last month of the twenty-eighth to get permission for street closure, C Street in between Third and Fourth. Um, at the time, it was suggested to give Rick, uh, Mr. Bykman, because of Market Place, and so that is what I did, and we got together, and you'll be happy to know that we will work together in this event, and that it will be successful for the city as well.
I think we'll be very successful combining these two. It's an accident, but it's gonna work very well. Along with fiber speed this Saturday, we should have a very busy downtown day.
I think we'll be very successful combining these two. It's an accident, but it's gonna work very well. Along with fiber speed on Saturday, we should have a very busy downtown day.
Do we have a timeframe on this?
Excuse me?
A timeframe?
What do you start?
Maybe.
What time do you start?
What time is the street gonna be closed, is what I'm asking.
Normally, on market days, we try and close it late, like the night before. If not, I'll be down there at six o'clock in the morning.
So, what time in the afternoon are we gonna keep the street?
Normally, this event normally finishes between three and four o'clock.
So, we're looking at an all-day closure, essentially?
Yes.
I'd like to mention also that that same evening, they're gonna have the Armed Forces Parade. They'll be coming to our next council meeting. It's gonna be a full day.
I move to approve the street closure of half courthouse side of C Street between third and fourth streets for Chamber of Commerce Market Days and now Ministries Health Fair, May eighteen, two thousand and thirteen.
I have a motion by councilman Castillo. Second by councilman Woodonis. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed, motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go on to four C. Consideration in action to appoint members to the ordinance committee. Mr. Miller?
This has been a point of much discussion and much effort, and as our counselor and Ms. Pollak pointed out, there's probably a number of ordinances that need to be addressed in the city, as well as how we codify them. We have all received a letter from council, you know, recommending that an ordinance committee consist of two council members that would work with city staff and members of the community to do this, and then come back to the council to make recommendations. We tabled it in the last meeting, waiting for this final publication of the ordinances, and because we had talked about appointing Councilman Rodriguez in his absence, and I don't know that he was willing to serve on the ordinance committee, so now that he's here, he can speak to that issue.
Sure.
I make a motion to appoint Jim Miller and Eric Rodriguez to the ordinance committee for C.
Second.
Now, the recommendation was that it be, that the committee consist of only the two council members. That city staff simply provide information to that committee and not be a member of the committee.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Castillo.
And just for sake of procedure, so we don't end up lighting ourselves like we did with the audit committee, may I recommend that you appoint one at a time and call for the vote? That way, we're not, and those being nominated are able to abstain, and we can still have a majority vote.
Mr. Miller, should I make a motion for one?
I make a motion to Jim Miller on the four C to appoint the ordinance committee.
Okay, I have a motion for Councilman Miller to be appointed by Councilman Woodonis. Do I have a second on that?
I have a second.
Okay. Now, I need a motion for the second person?
I'll call the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not the one. All in favor?
All in favor.
All opposed? Okay. All opposed? Motion carries, four, one, zero. Okay, now.
Second motion. Second motion.
Okay. May I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion to appoint Councilman Rodriguez by Councilman Garego, second by Councilman Castillo. All in favor?
All in favor.
All opposed? Motion carries, four, one, zero. Thank you. Now, we're gonna go on to four D. Consideration in action to approve rezoning from residential to commercial, seventeen sixteen and seventeen eighteen C Street. Before we go on to that, I would like to say that in all fairness to all parties involved, I would like to request a side to be tabled, because the information that has been provided has not been seen by P and Z. Decided should be tabled until P and Z receives this information and makes a formal vote on this matter, or council has any discussion or vote.
No real discussion. I attended the meeting last night, and according to Mr. Quintaria, he came up that he had some dedications. And, Mr. Byford, if I can ask you a question, you said that the reason was, both are written for tabled?
There were two reasons for tabling it. One, that there was a long discussion about a boundary dispute, and it wasn't resolved before the end of the meeting. I understand it may have been resolved now. The second, the request is wrong. The request is for to build offices there. That is under, is not under commercial. So, the actual request wasn't being correct.
Well, last night, they had said, I don't know if it came from, uh, from, but they said that the bigger gap was doing their business. But if you do it in, um, commercial, you could still build and do the office. Is that correct, or is that wrong?
That is correct. On the tier portion of it, the commercial, the first item on there, says, "You use regulations a building or purposes shall be used only for the following purposes." The first, number one, says, "Any use permitted in District B." And if you put that to District B, that includes business.
So, Mr. Gonzalez is allowed to put, that's what you're saying, right?
Under the tier of the way it's written, yes.
And I'm not trying to cross over the P and Z, but I think the P and Z kinda didn't ask the question, and I was, I asked him to speak last night, and I understand how the meetings go, and that's not a problem. But my concern was that the only thing, and I think y'all all got a piece of information there, what we're trying to zone is that, what is it, ninety?
Seventy.
Seventy by two thirteen. And I don't know if Mr. Quintaria's got a copy, but I'd like to give him one, and he'd like to see this.
I have a copy.
You have a copy? Okay, and last night, last night, y'all right away tabled it when he said, "I have legal on this." And I don't know if he had a copy of it, but this is, the, the, the one that he's disputing is, is the alley. Now, Mr. Quintaria does, this yellow part, are you disputing with legal action on that?
I'm disputing area one and area two.
Okay. Last night, at the meeting, we were just talking about the yellow shaded area, which Mr. Gonzalez has the deed, he's got the verit. Did he help me here, Mr. Cindy? Did he provide the right documents?
Yes, sir. He came to my office this morning and provided, um, documents from his survey that comes from the deed depicting what the survey is showing.
Are both of those address in the, um, in this, what is it?
The surveyor's, the surveyor's report coming from the courthouse's information is only coming from seventeen eighteen C.
Okay, so this, so our agenda is incorrect by wanting to approve the seventeen sixteen and seventeen?
No, sir. The, the, the property that's in question is the seventeen eighteen C. It clearly shows that he does own the seventeen sixteen C.
Okay, and both of those?
The small one or the big one? The small one is seventeen sixteen, the big one seventeen eighteen.
I gotta come back to the procedural piece here, if I may. You said this information was just given to you this morning?
No, he presented this information upon his application.
Okay, so this information that we're seeing went to planning and zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
And to me, it was like, as soon as Mr. Quintaria said, "I have legal," they weren't talking about, he, Mr. Gonzalez was just talking about that one area. He wasn't talking, I think Mr. Sanchez at the time too, was asking about the?
The Eastman.
The Eastman. And that was her concern. The Eastman has no, and another thing that I'd like to say, that all that block there, it's already commercial, except, I think, Mr. Quintaria's house. Even the gentleman that was speaking last night, that had said that, uh, that it was a, he didn't want anybody passing by, and whatever reason he gave. His property is commercial.
For the sake of procedure, you know, that it's already, that it's gone to P and Z, and P and Z has tabled it, and, you know, nothing against, you know, wanting to zone it in any particular way, or not zone it, you know, just for procedure. You know, I don't wanna overstep P and Z and, and all that, that they're doing to, you know, to, to keep things legit, you know, to keep everything aligned. You know, I, I would, you know, I mean, the recommendation that you spoke about earlier was to table it, correct, Mr. Byford?
Yes, but, but everything is clear. Everything is clear. Your recommendation, Mr. Johnson, about this item here, is there something, or, Mr. Rosenberg? You know, to me, I feel that Mr. Gonzalez is, is, is gonna have to put the stamp, or wait another two months, or?
I've already spoken to Mr. Gonzalez. We have a meeting in two weeks. I already offered to add that as a special meeting.
Okay.
And nothing is clear to me that why I came.
Okay, what, what is it? I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, trying to be mean. What is it that you don't understand about, he's trying to zone these two properties?
I do understand that. My simple fact is, I'm running by a survey that's put here that I received, and the shaded areas are overbounding my property line.
Can I see the copy you have? May I see?
Yeah, the same copy you have.
Okay.
And the, the only person that cares is you. I'm not there with anything.
He doesn't have that copy. What if you know what the people say?
So, it's a debate. So, I'm here to see.
Okay, this is, this is what he's, this is what we're voting on right here. This here is still in dispute, still, this is the only, that's why I'm asking you, are you against, this is the only, the deeds that he has, these two property rights. This, the alley, has no, we're not voting on that. This that you have, we're not voting on that. We're voting this for commercial.
Okay, I understand. But for the sake of procedure, you know, we're, we had the?
I'm gonna try, because he's got a lot of money invested, and I'm gonna try to make a motion to prove it's going for all ones, the commercial, seventeen sixteen, and seventeen eighteen C Street. I make a motion.
I abstain because he's my cousin, and, and he's a second, second cousin of mine, and, and I have to abstain my vote because, for nepotism purposes. Is that within, uh, within grounds, Mr. Rosenberg?
Certainly is appropriate from an appearance point of view as well. Yes, sir. And maybe, if I may, while I've got the floor, just a minute, tell the council, if you can have your ordinance book with you, if you'll look at one fifty-three point one oh two, subsection B, it says, "It is the intent of this chapter that all questions of interpretation and enforcement shall be first presented to the zoning administrator, and that such questions be presented to the city council only on appeal from such decisions." At top A, it says, "The city council shall hold a public hearing on all appeals made to it." I don't think you can have an appeal to yourselves tonight procedurally, when a matter isn't tabled, and I think acting tonight on this is out of order.
Mr. Byford, before you, what, upon your decision of the, was the Eastman taken into consideration?
It was a very confusing meeting last night, and, um, it was not clear to the P and Z board that the boundary dispute had been resolved by the end of the public hearing. When I closed the public hearing, none of the board members were clear that the boundaries had been, the boundary problem had been solved. That is why we tabled it.
Mr. Byford, as soon as he said he had lawyers on it, I recommend, you didn't even ask what legal, what paper did he, did he present any legal papers saying that he was with dedication?
I asked him who his lawyer was, and I was hoping he'd bring either lawyer.
He did not provide anything to you. He just said, "I have," prior off said, "I recommend to the board." You know, not even, it wasn't even one minute into the meeting.
It is not the board's problem. To resolve boundary issues.
Mr. Byford?
Yes, sir.
Is there any reason why this would not be approved?
With all the information we have now, in two weeks' time, I would, I would recommend that it would be approved.
You're gonna have the same information you had yesterday?
I disagree with you.
Phil, Byford, you said you spoke with Mr. Gonzalez, said he's okay with meeting in two weeks?
I didn't ask if he was okay. I just said that he doesn't have to wait long. We can call a special meeting to tag on to our next meeting, which is in two weeks' time.
Okay, in that, in that case, if you have a special meeting, my, my question is, if he's put the money into, put it all together, and then we're gonna hold it up, he's been waiting for a couple of months already, and then here we're gonna, so at the same time, how hard would it be for him to make it? Because I said, y'all said last night that the, the business is a bigger win than the commercial. Is that correct, or is it vice versa?
Mr. Johnson said that.
Commercial is higher than business, but commercial includes the tiers.
So, so, so if he would come back, how hard would it be for him to do the business? Would he have to reapply and go on back to the step, or do we start from overhead, or?
We start from overhead and just present it with all the information we have now.
I don't know what Mr. Gonzalez wants to do. There's a motion, but at the same time, I don't know if he can speak now, or, are you having, you want to go with the motion? I'm with the motion. Well?
Would you repeat what you said, Lou? I mean, are we out of order? If we proceed with the motion?
I think procedurally, Mr. Rodriguez has pointed out, procedurally, the matter's been tabled below. You can only take things on appeal, and you don't have an appeal because there was a deadlock below in the sense that it got tabled. So, I think that you don't have jurisdiction to act tonight.
In other words, it's like not, not coming to us yet again.
It shouldn't come to you.
And was it, was it tabled conditionally? Meaning, you, it was tabled, instead of tabled indefinitely, it was tabled conditionally on getting the boundary resolved?
The boundaries were solved, yes.
But he didn't, he did not present that admittance. He just said, as soon as he said legal, he said, "I wanna just table it."
No, no, that's not true. We can read the minutes back. Well, he said, "My recommendation was, to the board, to my board, was that we table it until the boundaries problem had been resolved." Those are exactly my words.
But you have, you, you have this.
We can read the minutes.
You, you have this here, and he showed you what they were voting on.
I said that.
Okay, I mean, and then the application, if you knew it was wrong, and you looked at it, why didn't we inform Mr. Gonzalez that it was, the application was wrong?
The copy that you received right now, I received it this morning.
So, you did not have this last night?
What I had last night was the same survey, but not colored in.
Because Mr. Gonzalez brought it in to shade it in, but y'all as a P and Z should've looked at his, at his deed, everything was in order. So, it wasn't, no, but I believe that the board didn't really, they know, it was two, three minutes at the most, and it was shot down.
They always tabled indefinitely, that's a problem.
It will be resolved in two weeks' time. I don't understand what the term of time is.
Other than not following procedure, I'm going to ask one more time, what will change in making a decision? What, what's gonna be different? I mean, you said it would be approved. Is there anything else?
I said, I recommend it, recommend it for approval, because the colored-in plan is a lot clearer than the plan we had last night. The boundary problem appears to have been resolved. So, there is no, there is nothing, no reason to not approve it.
I mean.
Why can't we? It's against the approval by P and Z. What's, it's two weeks, so I don't understand.
They're, they're both in the audience, I mean, can, can they come up and ask you, I mean, if, if we can ask them if, if this issue has been resolved? I mean.
It's definitely have to go to P and Z.
I'm uncomfortable giving the advice of legal counsel to entertain anything until the P and Z comes, or until it comes to the council in an appeal. We spent the day, the mayor, Councilman Castillo, and myself, plus several hours earlier in the week, as a result of an appeal to council. plus several hours earlier in the week as a result of an appeal to council that was followed procedurally correct. And now we're in mediation and litigation because of that. If we are going to bypass procedure, we're opening up the door to further litigation. Unless Mr. Gonzalez can tell us that we're presenting him with an extreme hardship by putting this off for two weeks, I'm inclined to follow the recommendation of council.
I think this would protect both parties that are having questions. I would have time to work out whatever. And like you said, there should be no issue.
This is just procedure because what we'd be doing, if we jumped over P and Z, we'd be, you know, creating precedent that, you know, that this is the way it's going to be done all the time.
If it's not jumping, I just don't believe, I think y'all just raised your hands up too quick without asking him. When he said legal, well, show me something, any kind of document.
We also did not have the document that showed the meets and bounds last night at that meeting. That has been taken to?
You didn't have him highlighted.
No, that document was not presented.
Was it presented, Sidney?
This morning, sir. I had asked?
What did you present in there with?
What I had in the application was his tag, copy of his tax resale deed, which is required for the application. And he brought in his survey. Now, in addition, I asked him last night if?